Is that mic checked? Good. Nancy, we're ready to go. Okay, welcome, everyone. Just checking with the monitor and A G P. Looks like we're ready to go. Okay, all right. Thanks, Nancy. I love that. Okay, welcome, everyone. Today's Tuesday, January 12, 2016. Happy New Year. We're at the Morro Bay Vets Hall. It's 4:00 P. M., and we're located at 29th Surf Street for a special meeting, and it's a study session for our goals and objectives. For the record, we do have a quorum. A council member heading sends his regrets. He has a scheduled absence. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order. And we will go into our presentation by our city manager. And then, at the point when we get to -- after the introduction, we'll get to a point where we'll ask for public comment. We'll go through public comment, and then go through the discussion process. So with that, I think we've got, oh, about an hour and 45 minutes. We're going to try to time it. So we have a little break in between the council meeting, starting at 6:00. And then we'll get going from there. So welcome, Mr. Buckingham. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, everybody. So the -- Mayor and I were just talking. We're now performing something for the second time that's on our strategic planning framework. We'll talk that in a minute. But a year ago this time, we did our first sort of goals and objectives session in which we developed annual work plan objectives associated with this goal. And we've been all the way through the year, having established goals and objectives, budgeted against them, executed many of them, had an annual update in November. And so here we are again, planning for the second year. So the purpose of this process is to gather input from residents, from the council, and input from the staff, and then to decide on, for the council to decide on, the city's 2016-17 budget year objectives. And as a reminder for everybody, our budget year runs from the 1st of July through the 30th of June. So we are thinking now about the work that we want to get done from July 1st of this year until June 1st of next year. So there's ongoing work still happening each day on last year's objectives or the current year objectives. And we're six months ahead, which is exactly where we should be, so that we can get input. We can synthesize that. The council can decide what we want to do. And then we go into the budget, and we figure out what money we have to do it. And then we come out of that and start executing on the 1st of July. So a quick update on the process. So the staff has here and has been put out, developed a draft list, I emphasize "draft", of 2016-17 objectives. That draft list was based on, or is based on, input from the public over the year as we've been through city meetings, been through stakeholder meetings, been interacting with the community. We've been listening to the public. Input from council over the year in council meetings and public meetings and individual conversations. And then from the staff's professional observation and assessment. So this draft that we're going to work through for a couple of months here and turn into a final is the synthesis or the product of input, hopefully that's holistic, from the community, from the council, from the staff, and from other places. So we're on the January 12, which is study session number one on this. Two weeks from today, we'll conduct a similar study session. So today, we'll probably be fairly broad, talking pros and cons of some of these objectives. Maybe we'll get through all of them. Last year, we didn't in the first study session. And that's fine if we don't get through them all. We've got another study session two weeks from today. Hopefully, we come out of that one with a fairly refined set of objectives. And then at the February 9 council meeting, in the regular council meeting, the council will consider this as an item for discussion in the regular council meeting. And then our target date for this to be complete, refined, and be able to be approved by the council and adopted as our 2016-17 objectives is the second council meeting in February. As we go through this process, staff will update these draft objectives after each meeting. And then those draft objectives are posted under hot topics on the website. So if you go on the website right now on your phone or at home, you look at hot topics, the first one there says "Goals and objectives 2016-17." If you click that link right now, you will see this draft document. And then by the end of this week, we'll have that updated with changes that come out of this meeting, additions, deletions. And then as we go through the process, we'll keep that updated until it's posted as a final. The quick review on the city planning framework. So as I mentioned, January, February last year, we did a goals and objectives planning process that reaffirmed our 10 goals and established 73 actually specific objectives for this current year. That was a sort of a lot, but we did that. That process was quite well received. And that process, the process was codified in order to become part of the city's strategic planning framework. And then on August 11 of this year, the city council approved the Morro Bay Strategic Planning and Budgeting Framework, which tells us how we're supposed to do this planning each year. That approval in August included these specific points for this meeting, for this set of meetings. One thing it said is to follow the same process that we did last year. So we're doing that. The other thing we decided in August was to extend the existing 10 goals for another year until next January, so that we could sort of, and you'll see this in a second, so we could get on to our four-year process of goals. And it also said to set these 16-17 program objectives for one year, one sort of more interim year, because next year, we will start on four-year goals and two-year objectives. And here's what that looks like. If you see the -- so next January, after there's a council election, when the new council sits essentially for the first time, they will look at our goals and establish four-year goals, and they will establish objectives for a two-year period. So the objectives, goals will generally go for four or more years, objectives for two years. And then the budget right now is a one-year budget. But to get on to that cycle, next January, we really need an interim set of objectives. So we're going to consider today objectives that will take us through January today and for the next six weeks, objectives that will take us through January of next year. And then we'll be right there, sort of middle of '17, where you see the four-year goals starting and the two-year objectives. So these are the 10 city goals that we have and that are being extended through next January. I'm not going to go through those in detail. The only thing I'll note, and we should, probably shouldn't even say this, but I've just talked about four-year goals. 10 goals is a lot for any organization. Most organizations do strategic planning with five to seven goals. And as we look at those, some of those goals are normally things that you really want to improve on or work on, not something that you just want to maintain and do every day. So some things that we do, such as core public safety services, those should be part of our mission statement. Those are things we should be doing well every day, not have a specific special goal for. There might be some specific improvements in that that would fall under operations or something. But as we look at these next year, we might actually try to winnow them down a little bit. Perhaps next year, the wharf will actually be seen more as an ongoing infrastructure project and not its own separate goal. And it would fall under improved city infrastructure. But those are, that's a great discussion for through this year as we lead up to next year. So with that, I'll quick, actually, I'm going to just hit the first bullet here. We're about to start through the draft goals and objectives. As the mayor said, before we do that, we want to hear additional public input. There's already a lot of public input that's included in this document. Some of you have sent that and have seen your words printed in these documents. I see Linda back there. But so I'm going to pause here and turn it back over to the mayor.
Thanks. And because we have a couple of these sessions, and this discussion can go on into our council meeting, wanted to have public comment first. And then if there's any additional questions following this presentation, feel free to send emails in, have any conversations that way. If by chance, we don't have the opportunity to have public comment following this presentation. But hopefully, folks that have reviewed this have some conversation or some comments that they'd like to make based on this draft. And at this time, I'd like to open up for public comment. For those who'd like to speak to this, please come forward.
Good evening. Rick Dashler, Morro Bay. Under the wastewater treatment plant, I attended the session that was done a month or so ago, and I noticed that our project consultant is probably old.
Is that, is that mic on?
Okay. Where does it turn on?
Is there a button down below?
Hello?
Yeah, it's on. It's not on out here.
Are you on? Am I on? Okay. Okay, then I'll try to, I'll try to speak louder. Rick Dashler, Morro Bay. When I was attending the wastewater treatment plant meeting a month or so ago, I realized that the project consultant is pretty old school, tends to wear blinders, and recommends shipping our solid waste to the valley. This type of action is contrary to environmental justice, where wealthier communities dump their problems on poorer areas. I hope that in the goals that you present or that you look at tonight, that you look at this and try to find a solution or direct the process to find a solution so that we can deal with our own solid waste. With Los Osos also going online with a wastewater treatment plant, it may be beneficial to have a regional between the two of our plants or simply deal with it ourselves. But in the scope of environmental justice, I think it's, you know, behoofing, it's necessary for us to deal with that. Also, as far as an environmental negative where you're shipping, you know, the truck traffic going back and forth to the valley for our solid waste is contrary to the goals that I believe this council has been trying to establish.
Good afternoon. Casey Caldwell, Morro Bay resident. And thank you for having this special meeting so that we can help steer the city. I find that my areas of interest seem to all fall under goal number eight, which is quality of life, the city goal, although I am concerned about the other areas. And under the quality of life, I have four specific areas that I'd really like the city to consider for 2016, 2017, and even longer range for the four-year goals. One is that we have a real aging tree population. A lot of these big, beautiful trees have been there for 100 years. That's why they're so big and beautiful. And there seems to be an accelerated rate of disease and cracking in the storms, and the trees are coming down at a pretty fast rate. I know that the city of Morro Bay used to have a tree policy and a tree ordinance. I understand that that was annihilated under Mayor Yates, that we don't continue to have a, or I'm sorry, not a tree policy, but a tree, a group of citizens who worked on a tree committee. And I don't think we have one of those anymore, do we? Is that, anyway, I'd like to see the ordinance reviewed for possibility of bringing us up to speed on that. I'd like to expand the area of the city that is protected under the view shed corridors as public views. I think there are many, many special places in the city of Morro Bay where the public views are gorgeous, and they're considered private views in residential areas. So I'd like the view shed corridor to be expanded. I'd also like to see the city develop objectives and goals for undergrounding transmission lines. I know that that was part of the general plan before. It should really be a top priority. And then develop a public art policy. What are our objectives and goals for public art? That really speaks to quality of life in Morro Bay, and we have a great opportunity to make use of the artists that live in our community and national artists. Let's, let's work on that, too.
Good evening. My name's Robert Davis. The Morro Bay Citizens Bike Committee has compiled a list of bike and pedestrian needs for the next few years, and I would like to speak tonight about those that we think are the most important. And the top one of those is the Class 1 bike path that goes from near Lemos up to the The pavement is cracking and buckling. And I, besides being a safety problem, I think we need to protect our investment in the infrastructure. We spent a lot of money to build a bike path. It's proven its value, and we need to preserve it. Second thing is a safety project on San Jacinto to help the students at Del Mar get safely from school down across Main Street and down to the Signal. And I think that that's something that can be done fairly simply through painting. Establish a green bike lane that tells motorists and bicyclists and pedestrians the safest way to negotiate that intersection. The third thing is to place the bike-friendly community signs. We are a bike-friendly community, and I know that that's in progress. Mr. Leivich has ordered those signs. The fourth one's a very simple one. Bicyclists coming southbound on Highway 1, when they get to Yerba Buena. Barry Brannon has noticed that often out-of-town bicyclists have difficulty knowing that there is a bike route starting there that goes through the neighborhood. Very simple to put a sign up on the information kiosk that's already in place at that point. The fifth thing, bike parking. We would like to see bike parking facilities placed at all public buildings, commuter destinations, business clusters, places where secure parking would help to encourage bicycle Number six, traffic calming solutions on San Jacinto. That's a long, straight, downhill street that encourages high speed approaching Main Street. And maybe we could combine this with the safe crossing for the Del Mar students. Thank you.
Thank you. You've got the submitted as hard copy as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Hello. Marlis McPherson, resident of Morro Bay. And I am also on the Public Works Advisory Board, but I'm not giving this testimony or this in that official role. But I do have to say that since I've been in that position, every time I mention it to people, they say to me, "What are you going to do about the terrible condition of the streets in Morro Bay?" And I know that we have been working on this issue for a long time, and I really, I know we've made progress. But I, in looking at these goals and objectives, I don't see a real commitment to actually fix streets. I see, I think, am I fading out?
No, you're good.
Oh, okay. I see that we're going to look for alternative funding sources, but there's nothing, no Plan B. If we don't get additional money, how are we going to fix the streets? And as Mr. Davis just said, once you have something, you need to maintain it. And I think we failed to maintain our streets and really need to make it a priority. And we could certainly look to the general fund for some monies. I also see that there's, in one of the objectives, it's research and bring to council possible implementation of a water and sewer franchise fee to improve streets. And I know that when we pass the water rate increase, there were some possible monies for smart meters. And perhaps we could redirect that to at least fixing the storm sewers and some of the street-related issues, so that would make some more money available from the general fund. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Walter Heath, Morro Bay resident. I've been asked to present a list that was compiled by the Citizens Beautification and Heritage Committee. And I went through and seeing the agenda, correlated the needs to the proposed objectives on the sheet. Now, I brought extra hard copies, but the fact that, you know, we're correlating to the agenda might be helpful for you. But let me start and see how many we get through here. As part of proposed objective number 7G, which is tree trimming, we're asking that research be done and brought to council for direction, a plan to install permanent lighting in street trees in the downtown core. One proposal within the proposed plan would be for lighting installed as the trees are trimmed, which would be more of an incremental approach. And the other proposal would be for lighting installed as a distinct standalone project. We figure that, we feel this is a safety issue. We also feel that this is a huge boon for economic development as it relates to 7G and also to 6B. Number two, approved design and locations of 10 interpretive panels of the Hidden History Project. There would be city staff time involved to complete installation of the panels at the approved locations. And we're asking for $10,000 in funding, which would essentially be a 50% match for the cost of the panels themselves. And we're listing this under economic development as well, and this is our rationale. Just as one presents one best self at a job interview, celebrating and presenting our history to residents, visitors, and potential employers invites and also expects others to value Morro Bay as a destination and as an economic partner. We feel that things like this finish our city and are important. Number three, as part of proposed objective number 7E, which is signage, research and bring to council for direction a signage program in two parts. Part one would be official city signage consisting of wayfinding signs, street signs, et cetera, with a design that conveys a Morro Bay identity or branding. Very important there. And part two would be, as it relates to commercial signage, to also formulate some recommendations for the inclusion of the design elements that are in official city signage in commercial signs, just as recommendations to folks who are developing signage for their businesses. So going to number four, research and bring to council for direction a plan for a no-smoking in public places campaign in conjunction with San Luis Obispo County Tobacco Control Program as a possible funding source with two purposes, addressing cigarette butt pollution that's polluting the estuary, and enabling enforcement of existing municipal code smoking restrictions. Thanks so much. We probably have a tag team here with people bringing up the others. Thanks.
Thank you, Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Rigmore. I'm very much for the utilities going underground, but since I know that's not going to happen as long as I'm here, I would like to, if there is a possibility, you know, just from my living room, I see nine poles with multiple, multiple lines. And just between my neighbor and myself, we got rid of six lines. They would come over to my house, from my house, strung along the thing, over to the next house. And there are a lot of wires that, they're all telephone wires, and then a new telephone line, and people don't have telephones anymore. And I was thinking the city might have some power to have these people who know which ones to clip. We clipped a few on our own, but, you know, it was kind of a little scary. Anyway, and I will also stand up for the smokers, because I'm a smoker, although very light. I don't have to smoke when I go uptown or downtown or anywhere. But here at the vets' building, I know when they have events, you know, instead of getting, you know, 40 butts outside or up and down Surf Street, how about a corner where many veterans smoke, even if they hide it, you know, they're out smoking and they kind of sneak it down in the ground. So I think when we do the outside of the vets' hall here, to make a nice little area around the corner, where people who like to smoke when they have weddings here, they have many events here, and I think that would be nice. But get the pole, you know, all the wires off the poles. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joan Solu, and I'm going to agree with Rigmore. I would love to see you lower all of the power poles, but I don't want to see Rigmore climbing any of them to clip wires. So just keep her safe for a little while longer. Anyways, I have a couple of things, one of which will cost $0 for the city of Morro Bay, and I'm hoping we can add it into our goals. It does correlate to almost every goal that you do have in here. And specifically to goal 1A, goal, sorry, 8A, and to the quality of life, all the quality of life goals. And it's fairly simple. It's just to ask you to move public comment. If you could consider moving public comment from prior to the city staff presentation on their staff report, it might alleviate some public comment by having the presentations answer questions. It may just tighten up the meetings a little bit for you all, but it also would allow the public to understand the perspective of city staff and where they're coming from as they move through an issue. And then it would allow them, if they had further, the public, if they had further comment or further question on not only the staff report, but the staff report and the presentation combined, which is so important because a lot more information comes out through that presentation, they could then ask those questions, and through you and the city staff, those questions could be vetted. So I would ask that as you move forward and look for transparency in our community, you consider moving the public comment period to after the city staff presentation, very similar to the way the county does do it. And then as you move forward, I am, as you know, a fiscal conservative. And so I would ask that, once you establish goals and objectives, that if you could put a public document out with what each of those goals and objectives are, may cost, the city of Morro Bay, whether it's over one year or over the lifespan of that goal and objective, and then the community would really know what those goals and objectives are going to look like in the future in terms of how it'll affect the city residents and the capability of the city to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for reading my letter. My name is Linda Merrill, and good afternoon, mayor and council members. My number one worry about Morro Bay government is solvency and how this will continue, how we will continue to pay our employees salaries and retirement. I'm really concerned about that. Also, I'm continuously watching out for our wildlife. And to me, this is part of our quality of life as well. And I'd like to ask you to have no fireworks in our city. Please eliminate that. Also, no shooting in the bay. I know this is a state issue, but I would like our city to stand with the environmentalists and people who care about the birds to please pursue reducing that shooting in the bay. Also, our Otter Appreciation Day. Thank you very much for putting that. Also, our Otter Appreciation Day, thank you very much for putting that in our goals. Also, I'm concerned about protecting our small-town quality of life. Please don't sell out to commercial people who want to put more and more bigger hotels here. Please have a review of our signage. I know everyone else seems to want more signs, and I want less signs, so I'm kind of at odds about that, I know. But our town square and especially to eliminate banners from that downtown square and our city park, please be careful of adding signs. Also, it makes no sense to me not to use the power from PG&E. We are desperately into deeply into the invested in Diablo, and as long as the thing is there, I think we should use the power until we can get rid of Diablo. Also, the Tribune back to environment. The Tribune had an article about the sea otter and told everybody in the county to come and see the babies in the bay. And also, a woman from Monterey was here to review or to oversee how boats and people and surfers and anyone who was near the otters would affect their behavior, if that changes their behavior, like the water taxis and things like that. So she's here to review that. So thank you all.
Hi, my name is Glenn Silaway. I'm a resident of Morro Bay and a part of the Citizens Beautification and Heritage Committee Tag Team. We have fifth objective is, as part of the Proposed Objectives Number 7 and Number 8, we ask council to consider inclusion of public benches in the facilities maintenance program and parks master plan. We would be helping to provide an inventory of those with the status for those benches and their quality. And we would in, I stopped reading, we want to develop recommendations for maintenance and replacement. We would like you to include in those recommendations a review of the donated and memorial bench programs. Our groups have volunteered to help if we can set up this maintenance and repair program. Number six, as part of the Proposed Objective Number 7K and 8A, council, ask council to consider inclusion of public restroom and public showers signage and maintenance in the facilities maintenance program and parks master plan. Those are important facilities for some people. As part of Proposed Objective Number 8I, this is the vets' hall renovation planning, do research and bring to council for direction a proposed budget for the conversion of the front lawn at the vets' hall to a garden place of honor and of reflection. Separately, research and bring to council a proposed budget for the addition of a public view deck at the end of Surf Street to improve this area generally. Number eight, as part of the Proposed Objective Number 4C, that's the 41 Main Street intersection, research and bring to council for direction details of Caltrans approval process and the availability of public art funding for a gateway mural at the Highway 141 overpass and underpass. Number nine, as part of Proposed Objective Number 7E, research and bring to council for direction a proposed budget for replacing the service organization sign located on the hill across from Lemos with a newly designed Welcome to Morro Bay sign that includes the plaques of service organizations and appropriate landscaping. Number 10, research and bring to council for direction a proposal to manage the Adopt a Park program and to adopt best practices for participants. The review should stress compliance with Adopt a Park agreements, especially with respect to agreement-required city approvals for subrogation and Adopt a Park duties, the completion of liability waivers and so forth, training and volunteer education of city policies and best practices with respect to safety. We're urging you to set up a recognition program for these programs as well. There's a lot of volunteer activity that's going into them. As part of, number 11, as part of the Proposed Objective 8A, Parks Master Plan, research and bring to council a direction process for naming and renaming parks. As you know, thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Dana McClish. I am a member of the Harbor Advisory Board and also the Chair of the Marine Facilities Ad-Hoc Committee. The Harbor Advisory Board, we had a special meeting in October to go over our own goals and objectives. This was brought about after a meeting with city council, mayor, and staff, just going over how we run our Harbor Advisory Board and what we can do to help the Harbor Department proceed with different items. So this Harbor Advisory Board Strategic Planning Workshop, we came up with a list of top goals and that we wanted to work on. And the number one was to continue pursuing the boatyard and haul-out, the marine facilities. Number two was, had to do with eelgrass, and we formed an ad hoc committee to directly look at that. We also want to ensure the dredging. We always want to keep an eye on that because that's vital to our harbor. There was a marine research facility that was brought up also that might have to do with the Central Coast Aquarium and keep our eye on that. We want to see that proceed. Support for the Harbor Enterprise Goals, support LEAP and other economic development efforts. And this again has to do with the marine facilities project that we've been looking at, marine sanctuaries. We formed an ad hoc committee to conduct research, basically, so that we could be educated and help educate our city as far as what this is. And there was a meeting last week that was very informative, and our ad hoc committee continues to do research on that. We also have off-boat sales directly to the public for the, from the commercial fishermen and then harbor cost allocation budget, looking at that. And then the last thing we have on here is to just kind of keep an eye on Measure D. It's the next time the council brings that up and assist in fact-finding and decision-making on that because that's kind of a crucial part of this working waterfront area on the north end of the Embarcadero. So hopefully, some of these things are still on your goals and objectives, especially the marine facility. We want to keep moving forward. We've gone a long way. We've allocated, you guys allocated money for a mini-master plan with that and the Maritime Museum and parking. And we've done that, and we've made some recommendations, and hopefully, we can get back with city council and make some commitments there so that we can start looking at financing and grants and what have you. Thank you very much. Look forward to talking to you about this.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to our city manager and start with presentation. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, that was exceptionally helpful. We continue to listen, and I said before, we're going, this is a process, this is, you know, we're just getting out of the starting gates in this process. So, and if I could ask, some of the items that we just heard were very clear and objectively. Other ones were, okay, I've said objectively, were maybe less objectively. So let me define and make a request. So if there are items that you would like to see, and we've taken notes and we'll try to translate, but for the purposes of this and for what the council is doing, we're setting specific, discrete, measurable objectives that can be budgeted against. So a good objective, and this is actually in one of our previous staff reports, a good goal is, hey, improve the streets. But that's not a very good objective for this fiscal year. And so a good objective, having to do with street signs, for example, would be to, or for streets, would be to pave a certain number of miles of streets this year. So whatever you can do for those things, again, we've taken notes and we'll try to do our best to turn those things into objectives. But please feel free to email me with ideas you continue to have on turning those thoughts and ideas you have into something that we can put down that's an objective. The way I think about it, it's something we can spend money on, and then we can scratch off the list and say, that one's complete. And so that's sort of what a good budget or program objective is, is something you can actually measure and complete. Okay, with that said, we're going to jump in, actually, I should just cover this very briefly, so everybody knows what we're doing here. We're going to go goal by goal through these. I'm going to try to very quickly present the objectives that are associated with a goal. And for those that take two slides, I'll do both slides worth. And then we'll turn it over to the council to ask questions or make comments on any or all of those. And department heads are prepared to go into more detail to answer questions on those. So to keep it flowing, I'm going to try to briefly review these. And then during, if you have questions, you want to go deeper, then the department heads are ready to do that. Staff is taking copious notes on your comments, on public comments. And just for ease of reference for everybody, we'll sort of generally continue to refer to these by the goal number and the objective letter. So 2D refers to Objective D under Goal 2. Okay, so with that, Goal Number 1 is Water Reclamation Facility. It's continue to get that job done. The objectives are to continue to pursue robust public participation, particularly in this year on site design and aesthetics. Second is property acquisition, that is to complete the appraisal on a property, to make a first earnest money payment, and to actually close on, or at least potentially close on, depends on how the process goes, close on the property before June of 2017. C is to complete the facility master plan. To be clear, this is the engineering master plan for the actual WRF facility. This is not a more general master plan for other parts of property that might be acquired with, for the water reclamation facility. D is to complete the environmental review. E is to, so last month, we applied for the State Revolving Fund loan for the planning loan, and this item E is to complete the State Revolving Fund construction loan application. F is to pursue additional Prop 1 grants associated with the WRF. G is to consider or evaluate possible annexation of future WRF property as part of the general plan, local coastal plan process. H is to make a decision on construction delivery, whether it's going to be design-build, design-bid-build, or any of those other options. I is to actually release, this is sort of exciting. Now, we're like, we're like a year and a half down the road from right now, and we're actually talking about releasing the RFP for construction of our new WRF. And so J is to issue that design-build or other design-construction contract. K is to, we anticipate that during this period, we will have to make the decision on whether we are going to build a facility essentially for Morro Bay or for Morro Bay Plus Cayucus. So we'll have to make that decision. I is in red because it's a slight change from the draft that went out, so we'll try to be very clear as we go through this of what has changed. That was sort of unclear. All it said was Cayucus property, I believe. What I, H-I-J-K-I, refers to is to work with Cayucus to determine the future of the property at the existing wastewater treatment facility. That's L, isn't it? Thank you. It's so great to have help. Thank you. And M, I'm trying to go quickly. And M is to complete the design and identify funding requirements for possible city corp yard component of the WRF. If a corp yard is to be integrated into a future WRF site, then likely parts of that, it would not be appropriate to fund it from water and sewer funds, and we'll need to, this in the next 18 months, do that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to the council for questions and comments.
Great. And I'll start from my right to my left on questions and comments. If we just do questions and then your comments from start to finish, instead of going back and forth, just start with your questions and comments, and then we'll go on down the line. Noah, thanks.
No questions.
Okay. You want to do any comments or additions as well?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. One, in response to Mr. Deschler, at that workshop, we did talk about onsite composting, and that question was answered in that we will continue to carry that forward as a goal, but it will be presented with analysis based on onsite composting versus other options, and then we'll make a decision, looking at the financial picture of that and feasibility of space and so forth. So we should be seeing a presentation that gives us that opportunity to make a decision in the future. My comment about the goal here would be an objective, I think should also encompass assessing water reclamation options to continue to explore ideas. We know we've received recent correspondence from the golf course, still interested in looking at a purple pipe option there. I think we should keep that on the goal-setting objective for this year because there are emerging opportunities, and we need to keep on building our resources there. And I too also think that the Morro Basin management planning should be, we should be aware that that's coming forward and start to assess potential funding sources and opportunities to address that. I think I'd like to put that one out there for staff to consider and maybe come back with some suggestions if they think, if our staff thinks we're too early on that, which is what I've heard so far, then I'd be willing to back off on that. But it's going to be a complex process, and we should probably start at least building the relationships to get the basin management planning process in place. And then the third would be, start to look at the various opportunities to improve influent quality, such as salts and so forth. We heard the WRFCAC already make some comments about how to improve the influent quality to the plant to reduce the cost of treatments and increase the value of that water on the back end. So those are my comments there.
Thank you, Noah. Matt, Christine?
Thank you, and thanks to everyone who offered input. A question, just back to you, Noah, the Morro Basin Management Plan, the recycled water uses, would you see that under Goal 9?
Yeah, I kind of wrestled with that, too. I'm more putting those out there as a suggestion and have staff, or if we felt very strongly, I think it is water-related, so I could, number 9 would work pretty well also.
Yeah, I could see them shifting over there. That's, oops, I turned myself off too soon. And then wondering about the influent quality, I mean, you bring up a great point, considering that was discussed last week with the WRFCAC. I'm wondering, from a staff perspective, where does that fall into perhaps one of the goals already listed? Is that a natural role into another goal, or should it be pulled out?
But if we just work through that and we bring it back to you next time.
Sure, oh, sounds perfect, yeah. And I know, I'll say one more thing that was mentioned publicly at the WRFCAC meeting. The reason I mention it is there was discussion there about a future ordinance, and I don't know where that is in the process coming up from there.
That actually never made it for my legal pad onto this, but that is absolutely something I think we should incorporate this year.
Okay, great. And with that, these are, a general comment about Goal Number 1, or you know, these are natural and logical next steps in the process. So to come up with something, you know, more, this is, it's great, it's kind of getting the rubbers meeting the road, and I think that shows good progress. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just have one comment, as far as the Morro Basin Management Plan, I would, you know, I also would expect, you know, staff is going to come back and say, hey, maybe that'll fit under 9, you know, water, but as we come through that, those are my only comments, but great to have that and ready for Goal Number 2.
Great. Goal Number 2 is improved streets. A is to consider a 2018, this would be outside of this goals period, but there might be work that we need to do within this goals period, ballot initiative or funding initiative. So the wording might be a little unclear. The intent here was to research and bring to council some of the pre-work for consideration if we might want to pursue a ballot measure in 2000, in November of 18. We've already decided not to do that in 2016. B says to complete B says to complete a certain number of traffic calming projects at appropriate locations. That rhymes with some of the public comment we heard. C is consider a water and sewer franchise. Essentially, that would be a tax on the water and sewer fund for the damage that water and sewer work does to our streets. So it's something we could think through and bring to the council, but that's what that, that's not a franchise fee on residents, so to speak. It's one on one of, on one of our internal funds in order to help improve our streets. Traffic signs to replace an additional 20% of non-conforming traffic signs. That's a continuation from last year, so we get all of our signs up to current standard over five years. Traffic markings, to refresh street markings in conjunction with our paving plan. Bike needs, to complete specific items from the bike needs list. We had great input from Red. We have that list. And so in future iterations of this, I anticipate to put some specific projects onto this list, onto our objectives, and then have others sort of TBD based on funding. Bike lane painting, we heard from, about that as well. We could bring you a scaled proposal during the budget period of $30,000 buys you this much green paint, and $50,000 buys you this much green paint, and here's what it would look like on the ground. Oh, and that's it.
Okay, great. And we'll turn to the left, and maybe Councilmember Johnson can lead us off on questions and discussion.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, I guess what I would like to see on Goal 2A is where are we in the discussion that the council sent to the Citizens Finance Committee on, they've been talking about funding initiatives that do not involve ballot measures? So before we move forward, I'd love to hear some feedback on that, either now or at the next goal time.
So great. So very briefly, in March, I believe we will have a fairly in-depth discussion, discussion at council level on a streets financing proposal that is on this year's, or you actually added to this year's goals. And we'll likely have a discussion in March, and then a decision later in March or in April on whether or not to pursue a street funding, essentially a loan. And we have a, I heard good comment, a public comment, but we have a, the main thing we need to improve streets is more money. There's a certain amount of money in the general fund, and so there's already a discrete amount of money earmarked for streets from Measure Q, about a half million dollars a year. Perhaps that we could go to the other areas in the general fund and deprioritize other things to add more money into, into streets, and that's a great discussion we have. But that's not going to solve the broader problem unless we really, really downsize something else in the general fund. Otherwise, we need to look for other ways to get either revenue or funds upfront to fund streets. So what this does is sort of puts us on a track so that, should the council want to do this, you could determine this year to go for a streets financing, not measure, but make a streets financing decision and have somewhere between $3 and $6 million over the next few years to invest in our streets. And then, potentially in 2018, consider a ballot measure to raise additional revenues to, quote, "finish the job."
Okay, great, thank you. And then, are we going to see a pavement management plan that does, are we in the two-year, have we decided, remind me, do we decide to wait? I know we talked about going every two-year, every other year doing maintenance. If you could talk about that, and where are we in that cycle? And what will we be seeing? If it's an off-year, will we not be seeing any street work? If it's an on-year, is that going to be a million dollars of work, based on, you know, two years of Measure Q? Kind of update us on where we stand with that moving forward.
This current fiscal year is the off-year. So we have implemented a change to our pavement management software and have that up and running. And in fact, that's how we ran a few scenarios. It'll be coming forward as to what different monies look like in improving those streets. So I think it depends what happens in March, if we'll be spending a million dollars or perhaps $6 million over the next two years. And with that pavement management plan, it's a model that recommends, based on street conditions, what streets should be worked on first. Of course, you have to ground-truth that and make sure it makes sense from a work coordination standpoint, too. So all that will be coming forward in a, I think what we called it last time was a pavement summit, or a streets summit last spring. We'll go into PWAAB and then bringing it forward to council.
So Rob just said, this year, this current year is an off-year, which means next year, the one we're talking about is an on-year. So I've just added a bullet that we'll put up for next time that says something like, "Plan and execute a $1.1 million street paving plan in fiscal year 16, 17 with the monies saved at that point." Is that, do I, am I off-year?
I guess that's, that would be correct, unless we plan on some other financing strategy, then we could, you know, potentially spend more dollars on streets.
Okay, and you can always put an asterisk on that or something. Okay, great, just so we're addressing it. And then I'm just curious, Goal Number 2B, how is that different from Goal Number 4, D and E? So traffic calming here, three to five traffic calming projects at appropriate locations. And then, under Goal 4, we see specific places we have talked about, San Yost, Main and Easter Street. Just wondering if that's, they could be combined in some way, or if they're different.
Yes. 4, C and D are two potential, two of the potential three to five projects.
Okay, so they'll, somehow you'll pull them together.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you. Okay, great. And I didn't say at the beginning, if I could just insert here, this is great draft. It would be really, you know, frightening for the public and for the council to be handed, you know, like a blank piece of paper and say, you know, "What do you want to do?" So thank you for paying attention over the last several months to what the public has mentioned and what the council has said, and things we didn't get to that you know we wanted to, but for one reason or another, we had to reprioritize. So I appreciate not coming in with a blank slate, and I appreciate the pre-draft work that you brought to us. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Christine. Matt?
Yes, I do have a question on Goal 2A, in terms of the funding initiative. And then, looking at Goal 4C, when we talk about the pavement and roads in terms of funding, when we look at the roads, is it more prudent to put the 41, in terms of public safety, the intersect funding, intersection funding that we've been talking about in terms of looking at state funding? So should those two be separate? I guess, Rob, is that a question to you, in terms of funding pavement and roads?
The initiative funding is, would, I believe, would be all-encompassing. Council would select which projects that they want to do with that. So it could, if there is a funding need for a large project, council, and this ballot initiative was successful, council could dedicate earmark a certain amount of funds towards that. I don't think they're mutually exclusive at all. Goal Number 4C is really specific to a project that's been around for a long time. It's been in our general plan. We took it almost through environmental review about 10 years, 15 years ago, sorry. And it's something that we have some current grant funding to investigate, and we'll need to make a decision regarding how we fund the construction of that project because of reduced federal and state funding that are going towards transportation projects.
Okay, I guess with that in mind, then in terms, then what would you surmise in terms of looking at our pavement management plan, being that this is a down year? When would we start to ramp that up, planning for that next on-year?
So we already have started the planning phase of that, implementing the Streetsaver model, moving over from MicroPaver, so that's entered. We've run a few scenarios based on several financing-type conditions, and those will be moving forward this spring through PWAAB.
And I'm sorry, Rob, you don't have to give me the minutia, because I realize that at this meeting, we're talking about these. But so for the citizens, we can say in these off-years, we would be doing it like you're saying now, so.
Yes.
So thanks for all that.
Off-years now, on-years, it's already been done.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, great. I'll just go through my questions and comments, and then turn it to Noah. Same thing, pavement management plan, and then, since it is an off-year, one part of that is conveying the message to the community that we, what we're shifting to, because there's always the, so I just want to make sure, whether or not this is a goal, but I just want to discuss briefly, that is the community properly informed that we're going to this two-year cycle? So for one, I just want to make sure we're conveying that. And then, the other part of that is usually during our pavement management plan, on an annual basis, at least maybe past year or previous year, we talked about making sure we dedicated enough funds for potholes and repair. And I think, whether or not it was last year or the year before, you know, whether it was a discussion of $50,000, and that seems arbitrary, but with staff input, we did have conversation in ensuring we had appropriate dedicated funds for potholes and street repair. So having said that, if we're doing the pavement management plan every other year, I want to ensure that we have some funding, and we're still paying attention on, every year, to some potholes and repair. At least that's what I hear from the community. On an annual basis, we still need to maintain, we need to be able to go out and say, "There's a street needs repair. We've got a couple potholes. We got to address that." So I just want to make sure we're covered on that.
Yes, we did that in this year's budget through the general fund. We've budgeted for an average of four tons in asphalt a week.
And so in this coming budget cycle and objectives, I just want to ensure that we're capturing that as well.
So that's a recurring thing in the base budget? Not a special objective associated, just like firemen putting out fires isn't in the objectives, it's something we do every day?
Okay. Just want to make sure.
We could add the firemen putting out fires to the objectives.
Okay. All right, thanks, that, those are all my comments. Noah?
Yes, thank you. I just had a question on F regarding the bike needs, and I guess this would also go for the citizen beautification recommendations as well. We aren't necessarily going to get into the specifics of the individual recommendations tonight. Do you, when do you expect that we would look more closely at the individual items within both of those lists?
If a council member tonight were to say, "Hey, of those seven things, 1, 7, and 3 are exciting to me," then we would take that note, or if we talk about it in future meetings. But staff is listening to, the public is assessing, is listening to groups like the bike, citizens, the bike committee to council, and then we'll work through this and likely next time, bring some specific objectives, and then you can add to, specific projects from that list on this, on this next time, and you can scratch or add or whatever.
Okay. So I think it might be good to continue working through the entire 10 items. If we have time, get into the individual lists, and if not, make sure we do revisit those. It would be helpful to know as we, as we look at those individual items, realistically, within the other framework of goals and objectives and our budget, where staff might recommend us to focus in and even give the different groups a chance to perhaps update or recommend which items seem the most likely to be achieved.
That's great, great discussion. So just to flesh this out, you know, so we just got great input from Red, for example, on the top seven or eight. We'll go through those now and say, based on what the budget looked like last year, and what it will likely look like this year, can we do 1, 2, and 4? You know, based on how much we think they'll probably cost. Putting up the signs is almost nothing, you know, so, but paving a giant bike path or adding a new bike path is significant. So we'll do that staff internal assessment and likely bring to you next study session the three or four, or two or six objectives from that list that we believe are achievable, both with staff time and resources and with budget money.
Dave, I just want to add one more thing about the list, is a couple of those items, at least, are in our current work plan that we're working on, like the Cloisters High School bike path resurfacing and the bike-friendly community signs. Just waiting on the order to be, actually get here to put those up.
Great. On to Goal 3.
Okay, Goal 3 is one slide, it's the planning slide.
Thank.
Thank you.
Need to join the army. Goal 3 is the planning slide. It's only one slide. A is to pursue robust public input on the continuing GPLCP process. The council will hopefully approve the contract tonight, and we will be off to the races for two years and looking for every opportunity to have great input and participation from residents, from visitors, from everybody on that. B is to bring to council for your consideration a proposal to make an addition to the general plan, local coastal plan update, that would include a full zoning update and overhaul as part of that process. And that's a, that's a natural add, and really, that'll be a budget decision if there's money available to make that, to do that add-on. But we would certainly recommend that we consider doing that, because we will save money in the long run by doing it as part of the GPLCP instead of later. C anticipates that it could be that there is some space at the future WRF site that is not dedicated to the actual WRF. And if so, we might need to master plan what we would want to do with that space, whether it's five acres or eight acres, or however many extra acres there are, that there might be other things that we should consider doing at that site besides just the WRF. So that would be to master plan that. D is to update our wireless ordinance. That's the ordinance that provides guidance on how AT&amp;T and Verizon and others put up, put up cellular antennas and those things. It needs to be updated. E, so we had an objective last year for a downtown strategic plan. You recently, and it was budgeted for, you recently said, agreed with, and that we should actually do a downtown waterfront strategic plan, and that's budgeted for $100,000. This actually says, "Let's consider incorporating that in the general plan," again, to save money. Because likely, if we incorporated that as a module of the general plan update, then we could get it for a better deal than if we went out to a completely separate group at a separate time. And F is the northern waterfront implementation plan. Some members of staff and I have a meeting later this week, early next week, to talk a little bit more about this. But there's been some planning of what to do, essentially between Tognazini's and The Rock, and that part of, that's the northern waterfront. And this might morph a little bit between now and the next time we meet, as we determine really what the right way to approach that is. But I wanted to make sure we put it on the, put it on the menu, at least for now. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Matt, you want to lead us off on this one?
No, I can.
You're good? Okay. I'll make some comments on this, and then pass it to Noah, and then back to Christine. Great option for the, obviously, on this particular agenda for City Council, we have our general plan, LCP, contract coming up. With the addition to that, we have the zoning option, which obviously we'll discuss. So great option to have here on the goals and also on the staff report. Pardon me, some of my questions I had earlier were basically, we have set ourselves up to do, update our general plan and LCP, and we went ahead and agreed to do the downtown strategic plan. And Scott, if you can just convey the message, reinforce the message for me, my questions were, by adding these downtown waterfront strategic plan, northern waterfront implementation plan into the scope of the general plan, LCP update, pardon me, are we increasing the work scope, cost, and time to complete the general plan and LCP update?
Increasing the work scope, well, yes, it would be an increase in work scope for it. I mean, what we're looking at is we have money budgeted, you know, to take care of these things. But we're going to, we're doing a massive planning effort with the general plan update. And I don't want to duplicate efforts, because the general plan update looks at land use and what we're doing all over town. And if we can kind of piggyback on top of that with these sort of specific plan-type things and kind of push them out through that process, maybe there's, we get some economies of scale there, and we get more bang for our buck. And I certainly don't want to just take off on a separate tangent. buck. And I certainly don't want to just take off on a separate tangent, you know, entering into a contract with some other consultant when we're kind of already looking at a lot of these things at the same time. And so, you know, if the council later this evening, you know, agrees to move forward with the contract for the general plan update, then I would be talking with the consultant to see what that would look like. And so, I'll have some, I'll have a much more, I'll have a much better idea of, you know, how that could happen and what that would look like moving forward, because I'll get to sit down with them and kind of work that out on paper. And so, that's why we have it in here. Again, we're trying not to, you know, duplicate efforts, and we're trying to be really careful with the city's money and how we spend it, and still get those plans that we want in place to move those areas and town forward. So, I hope that answers your question.
Sure, thank you. And I guess the other part of that was, part of the conversation was north Main Street specific plan. And so, you know, we have downtown waterfront, this core here, but we have had a north Main Street specific plan. And I just want to ensure that, as we're going through the general plan LCP update, we're encompassing things that include the specific plan that already exists in north Main Street. That's a question posed from our constituency that often reminds us that we forget about our north Moray Bay neighbors. And I just want to emphasize that I don't think we are, but I want to just hear from you and for the rest of council on that subject.
So, that's a good question. And, you know, because this is, you know, it's a comprehensive, you know, look at all things planning related for the city, the general plan update is. It'll look at every specific plan that we have. It'll make suggestions to do things with those. They might be able to be absorbed into the general plan and LCP and just become a planning area, a separate item in a planning area. We can pull the policies and goals that work in there, we can update them, we can amend them, we can change them, and then it just becomes a new, a planning area in town, and we don't have the specific plan anymore for it. It's incorporated into the general plan, that's one way I've seen it. And if there's more specifics that we need to put in place, and that can get pushed into the zoning code update. So, it may be that we remove some of our specific plans and have these planning areas in town where these policies reside moving forward. That's oftentimes what'll happen when you have specific plans that have been, that have been around for a while. It's easy to kind of absorb them, because we know what works and what doesn't work in them, and we can absorb them into these planning documents. Or then they can also outline things that you can do to improve them, potentially, if we don't absorb them into the general plan and give guidance to updating those plans.
So, still need to understand, so thank you for that, and that helps me, hopefully helps council as well. But as far as F, northern waterfront implementation plan, need some, just need to understand that a little bit more. And as I was listening to the part about from like Tognazini's north, we have a Measure D area. So, unfamiliar with the focus on a northern waterfront implementation plan, just haven't heard much buzz about that. But certainly, we've heard, you know, about a Marina project, Triangle parking lot, we've heard about Measure D. So, I just want to have an understanding of what that discussion really means.
As I said, we're going to have a conversation later this week or next to think through that a little bit more. Soon after I arrived here, somebody showed me the plan for that area. And apparently, it wasn't a very well-developed or very well-shared plan, because many people, just like you said, you weren't aware of it. It was showed to me as, here's the plan. And so, this objective considers starting a community discussion on, and maybe Togs was a little too early to speak towards, but let's say, from Coleman Beach around the corner up to The Rock, the playground there, the basketball court, the Rock parking lot, we know the statue is going in up near The Rock, potential viewing platform out near the jetty, those are some of the things that have been discussed. So, this envision, or considers starting a discussion on, do we want to leave that just like it is, or are there other things we'd like to do there?
Okay. The questions. So, I just want to make sure that as we, basically, the benefit or distraction of incorporating something like this into the work we're already doing. So, I'll pose that question out for the rest of council, and we come back, we can whittle through this as necessary. But obviously, for me, I just want to make sure that we're focused on our general plan LCP component of that and making sure we're moving forward and not broadening the timeframe for that. But I appreciate your help on that. Thanks. Noah?
Yeah, thank you. I think I just want to follow up a little bit on what you were just talking about and also include into that conversation and understands with the Tascadero Road and Barcadero North area, you know, the rationale for selecting one over the other. I know that's probably much further off, but at what point does that, does it make sense to include that as well, knowing that planning's going to take quite a bit of time? And I'm open to suggestions.
We actually planned that out and decided that that was appropriate for next year's goals and objectives, not this year. So, that, you saw on the WRF, we need to work through this year on what's going to happen with the Cayucus partly-owned property there. But as we did our timelining, we believe that next year's goals and objectives is a time to start the master plan for the existing wastewater treatment plant property.
That makes sense, particularly knowing that the picture will be much clearer at that point as well.
The good part also is, because we're doing the general plan update, we're going to be looking at all of these properties in town and what we're doing with them. So, it'll be one of those things that I was mentioning where it says, hey, it's here, and then you should go look and develop a separate plan for it. And these are the items that maybe should be included in it, because we'll be doing public outreach and getting information about what people would like to see out there. So, it kind of dovetails into that process.
Okay.
Great. Christine?
Okay, great to wrap up goal three. So, on 3B, we, that's coming up, and we'll be discussing a little bit more about that, I think, tonight. But did we see the GPAC supported this zoning inclusion?
They made a recommendation to council, yes, to do that. And so, it was, the scope of the proposal that we got back, and we're talking about things that are coming, come later.
It's a preview, it's a preview.
Yeah, so, and the, it was, the proposal was scoped to include a, basically, a consistency update. So, you have all these general plan policies that we're developing, LCP policies we're developing, and now you're going to have to push that into the zoning code, because there's going to be a bunch of inconsistencies in there. So, they were just going to fix that and leave our zoning code in the form that it is, and kind of, so it wasn't going to be refreshed, it wasn't going to be updated to be something that's a more modern document. And so, when GPAC, when the GPAC saw that, they said, hey, maybe we should not do that and we should overhaul it and make it modern.
Okay, great. And then, I'm working off the list that we heard from public comment for the harbor advisory board, their proposed goals for us to consider. So, I'm wondering under land use here, is this where we would have a marine facility or respond to the mini-master plan work that's been done, or will that be somewhat concluding in this fiscal year?
We definitely need to add it to objectives for next year. And we'll figure out where the best place is and bring it to you next meeting.
Okay, great. And then, there was also a mention of Measure D, and I know the mayor mentioned Measure D. Is there something, that came from the harbor advisory board, so I don't know if there's something about Measure D that's coming forward, or are there just sort of watch, jogging Measure D? Just wondering if staff had any feedback on why that was on their goals list.
Yeah, good evening. I think it comes from the harbor advisory boards, obviously, there are ongoing concerns with Measure D and the whole waterfront, but really about knowing that Measure D was, I think, on the tentative agenda planner for quite a while into the past, and they've still got their eye on it, and they're just kind of ready and willing to leap when we start to get closer to addressing that. They want to be able to jump in and assist if possible.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't sure we had anything specific to just the measure coming forward, but I may have missed it.
On the current council agenda planning guide, there's no Measure D item. So, it is not currently under consideration for anything. Should the council wish it to become under consideration, you can agendize it. And what I sort of heard from Dana was, we want to keep an eye on that, not do something about it.
Okay, yeah, just, well, that's what I heard too, but you all have lots of conversations with folks. Okay. And I think from that list, I heard those were the only ones that I thought were, fall under land use, but I think we'll all probably keep an eye on where they fit. And then, as far as that, that would be all for goal three. Thanks.
Thank you. On to goal four. Thank you.
Okay, goal four. A is speed survey, and that is just continued good work that we should be doing as a city, and that is to update the speed surveys. We've got the appropriate speeds marked for all streets in town. B, we'll talk about it a little bit more this evening. But what B does, B envisions that a recreational or adult-use initiative will be on the 2016 state ballot. And whether that's passed or not, this essentially says that, starting in January 2017, after that ballot initiative either passes or doesn't pass, then we should have a robust community conversation about what we want to do with all aspects of marijuana, cultivation, medical, recreational, all of those things. C was talked about already. Essentially, we have a, if we want to fix the 41 and Main intersection, we need to find about $2 million to do so. And so, the staff, what this says is staff go do some research and figure out what are the various ways, methods that we might be able to fund a significant, match the grants for that improvement, the intersection. D and E are traffic calming projects by name, and so, we'll figure out if they fit better here or under traffic calming back on improved streets. F might be a good place to also incorporate the smoking concerns that were brought up during public comment. The PD is interested in doing essentially a Good Neighbor campaign this year that looks at aspects of public safety, of code enforcement, perhaps public smoking, all those different things as we sort of, I'll just leave it at that. G's in red, because it's actually down there under K also. We just, I forgot to take G out. H is, so, is warnings, so warning citations. Essentially, at the, at the front of the Moray Bay municipal code right now, it says, I probably shouldn't advertise this, but here we go. It says that we don't cite you for anything without warning you first. The council actually took action on something, unless there's a specific exception. So, earlier this year, you added, and you made fireworks, a you can get fined the first time you violate our ordinance on fireworks. We probably, this recommends we go through our code and look at other things. Do you want, for example, driving on the beach? Should somebody be, if it's a Moray Bay code, should that always be a warning the first time? Or if there's a sign there that says, don't drive on the beach, and somebody drives on the beach, should we cite them with a fine? That's what this considers is, of all of the areas of the code where it says, warn first, are there any that we want to take away that warning first? A public safety scrub of the code really says to look at all of the public safety ordinances, and just to do a healthy scrub of those, we'll probably get one of these a year and go through our code. And this year is public safety year to do a scrub and make sure, as Scott was just sort of saying, like the zoning, like our zoning code is sort of archaic. If we do bits and pieces of this each year, we'll get through it. Strategic plan implementation, both the fire department and the police department are doing strategic plans now as part of this year. And this, they're not complete, but once they're complete, we want to have something on here that says, and actually implement certain elements of that strategic plan. And then, K is public education, both CERT and to provide CPR training in the community. Mr. Mayor?
Great. And Noah, you want to lead us off on this one?
Yeah, I don't have any question or comments. I think these are excellent, though.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Councilmember Johnson?
Just a quick one. Great stuff. I love to see CERT coming back. And I'm just wondering, CERT is normally, I think it's almost always been on Tuesdays. And I was wondering, you know, none of us can do it, and we all say we want to do it. But I was wondering if it's just there's a reason it's Tuesdays and because of council meeting nights, if there would ever be another time when it could be offered.
Well, you're correct. Today's class, tonight, is the first of the multiple-day class. What it is, the instructors, they teach at three different locations. So, it all integrates with all the different three communities that we teach at. But that has been brought up, and we're going to try to do it on off Tuesday nights, so that the council can enjoy that also. And by the way, today, there's a five-session class, and today starts at the fire station 30 minutes ago.
Yeah, it's getting rave reviews from people who've gone through it, and I really appreciate it that we're sticking to it and giving more opportunities. And can you go, could I go to like Los Osos and take the class, for example? Or is it better to do it in your hometown?
Well, it's always good to do it in your hometown, but the same education is being taught at each of the different locations. So, if it's being taught in Los Osos, Tascadero, Cambria, Templeton, it's all the same curriculum.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Matt?
I do have a question in terms of public safety, and this goes for both police and fire, because I see a lot of proactivity here, Good Neighbor policy, warning citations being proactive. What is our, is there a component in terms of reaching out and educating the public via our website or Facebook page in terms of the public safety, public safety, public education process?
That's exactly what this envisions, is putting together a campaign that is broad, that uses web, Facebook, and uses mobile city halls, council meetings, engagement periods, CERT classes, all different methods to educate in Good Neighborliness.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Great. And I'm good to go on this as well. I think everybody's waiting on this. Great. Goal number five. Thank you.
Okay, great. Number five is fiscal sustainability. There's two slides. Number one says to do another professional external budget forecast next January. We think that's important, because it would be great for the new council that comes in to receive that sort of external independent budget forecast. It's a number, or B is to implement additional budget transparency, citizen participation actions. It'd really be good if we can define some of those, and perhaps we will before we come back. The CFAC will have been in existence for a year at this, during this coming year. So, I think it's a good time, as we said during its inception, to review their roles and responsibilities, see how it went for the first year, and see if we should update their sort of founding document in any way. Community Choice Aggregation says to partner with regional entities to continue sort of the process or to continue to be available for community choice aggregation, working with other communities. E is a management partner's recommendation, and you'll recall that I committed to you to bring all management partners' recommendations to you at least. So, the staff, I wasn't sort of, you know, burying some of them, the ones I didn't like. So, every management partner's recommendation is either being done or being offered to you here. And this is a good one for the CFAC, and that's to develop a comprehensive set of budget policies. F is a cost allocation plan, that is to, that is, excuse me, I'll turn to the slide. That informs how we bill ourselves for various services provided by the city. So, for example, how much of Joe Panone's time is billed to the Harbor Enterprise Fund, the Water and Tour Fund, and it'd be good to update that. That's actually one of the things on the harbor advisory board's list. Vehicle replacement says to determine what our requirements are. Do we have too many vehicles? And then, figure out what the replacement cost is for those, and then to budget for that, so that we have a plan that we follow for vehicle replacement. Again, another manager, H is another management partner's recommendation, and that's to consider establishing paid RV camping areas in the city. I, another management partners, is to evaluate the trolley program and determine what, whether to keep it or modify it, or what to do with it. And then, finally, J is another management partner's recommendation, and it's one that we, in fact, we sort of started on last week. And that's to evaluate partnerships or contracting opportunities to increase the range of recreation programming opportunities. So, that would be perhaps partnering, not replacing, but in addition to what we currently do, partnering with the Y for additional programming opportunities. Mr. Mayor?
Great. And to start this conversation off, I guess I'll start this one off. Just a real quick question on the, one of the management partners, H, RV camping areas. Any thought about just having that part of the conversation in the general plan update? So, we're kind of leading our way in there, maybe during the general plan LCP update, we're looking at areas of the community, and we just kind of go through that process. So, that was my comment there, and, you know, why we'd be exploring that now. Other than that, those are my only comments. Noah?
Yes. I was curious to know where that one came from as well. I know we have done some work on that in the past. Besides that comment, I'm glad to see the community choice aggregation item in there, and I think that's strong enough as it's written. I know at some point, we'll have to dig deeper into the feasibility of the system and what community benefits we'd like to derive from a program. But I think what we have there is strong enough to keep us engaged.
Great. Matt?
My question is about budget transparency. My question is about budget transparency, and in terms of what's going on with the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and in terms of putting it out there for the public to see. When we talk about transparency, are we talking about something online, where people can look at line item budget whenever the call comes to them?
That's... Yes. So, one of the tools that we would consider under this is, there's a thing called OpenGov, open.gov, or opengov.com, that... It's got a dot something. That provides really clear and easy-to-understand transparency of a budget. So, it would be evaluating tools like that to further improve transparency. And if I could, if you're... Again, I told you I was committed to bringing all of management partners' recommendations to you. You're the ones that get to decide if they live or die. And so, I don't want to kill things that somebody else has said, has made the recommendation, or I should say, we don't. I think the only RV camping area is really out there in consideration, or at The Rock. And so, this could easily be... H could be scratched out, and you could say, "Hey, if we do that Northern Waterfront implementation plan, you know, when we consider what to do at the Northern Waterfront, make sure you consider RVs or not."
Have a discussion.
As part of that, instead of as part of the general plan, perhaps.
Anything else, Matt? Christine?
Is he finished, Matt? Okay, okay. Yeah, I love this, goal number five. I think it's really what makes the engine run, so it's good to see, moving forward. I think that one thing this council and the staff have been working toward is continuing our desire for what we call good government. So, five, E. I'm wondering, our budget policies. We have, we did a lot of work end of the fiscal year, getting our strategic investment policy, and our general fund policy, and our, hmm, risk management policy. So, would they... This would just... How would... What other ones are we looking for? There are more? Good.
Yes. I've got a document in the works right now that's got budget and fiscal policies, and so it'll pull in a lot of the resolutions that we've passed way in the past, where at the end of the year, we move cash in the enterprise funds into the accumulation fund automatically. We have, of course, all of our policies that we've developed, our forecasting model, our goals for our general fund emergency reserve. We have a lot of them in place, but they're all separate. And so, I'm starting to drag them all into one document, the investment policy, our appropriations limit. There's a lot. And I got into the city of Sloan, got theirs, and it's really interesting to walk through and say, "Yeah, we've done that, we've done that, we've done that, we've done that." Okay, now we'd have to get it all in one place.
Okay, great.
So, it's coming together.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you. And then, ongoing with the good government reviews would be the cost allocation plan, which I think is important for us. So, I would support that management partners. Vehicle replacement, again, I think we did leasing last year, vehicle leasing, and decided we weren't going to do it, so it's good that we're refreshing ourselves all the time on these things. And then, you know, I would like to see RV camping areas removed. I will vote... I would just suggest it comes out entirely. Also, you know, we really are waiting to see the results of our economic development strategic plan, and I just kind of... I'd like to not really have it on the goals, and let it naturally flow out of the GP/LCP update, as we've said. Okay? And then, I see also, you did mention the Harbor cost allocation budget. That's another thing off the Harbor Advisory Board. Thanks.
Great comments. And with that, move on to goal six.
Great. Might be make it through goal six, at least. This one has three slides, as it should for us, economic development. So, A says to update and revise the city's lease management policy. That's the policy that governs and provides direction to how we manage the Tydlands Trust leases. B says to adopt the economic development strategic plan, and to look at specific items to actually execute, so that it does not become another plan that just sits on the shelf, but it's actually one that we execute. C is sort of a placeholder for any Morro Bay power plant items that... And I need to think through that a little bit more, but that might emerge. D is business community partnerships, to work together with the Chamber of Commerce and other economic development partners to enhance cooperation between retail, restaurant, hotel, and activities. E is to redo the doing business section of the website. F is to research and bring to council incentive opportunities to encourage businesses to either invest more in Morro Bay, or to relocate to Morro Bay. G is to research and bring to you opportunities to provide city-based support services for local businesses. I think all four of the ones we just talked about are almost all likely partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce, Merchants Association, and other groups. H is to partner with a local real estate agent to create a commercial real estate inventory. There isn't one right now. It was sort of a leap of action last year, and it didn't really happen. And so, what this says is to look for a local real estate agent who is willing to conglomerate all of the, and keep up to date, all of the commercial lease opportunities in the city, so that a... Somebody who wants to do business here, they only have to go to one place on our website to find all of the available commercial properties. And I, we'll talk about some more, but is to work closely with the Central Coast Aquarium and for approval of a concept plan for the new aquarium, should you give consent of landowner at our meeting coming up. J is to... This says explore other business improvement districts in Morro Bay. Not sure we worded that one that well. Most of us don't believe that the best way to accomplish that is for the government to come knocking on your door and say, "Hey, let's organize." It would be better if it was sort of a grassroots approach. We look forward to your comments on that. K is to do a scrub of the economic development code, excuse me, of the... Of our... Essentially, of our Morro Bay city code, to look at policies that might impede or hamper businesses, and to consider, and to bring to you recommendations to ensure that we are as business-friendly as we can be. I is to update the current MOU for the Maritime Museum and then complete a license agreement as we continue to move the Maritime Museum project down the road. And M is to begin to market Morro Bay as a destination. It's sort of wordy there, and look forward to working on that one, but as part of economic development, this really gets to marketing Morro Bay as a complete holistic destination with great activities, great food, great retail, great hotels.
Mr. Mayor? Ready. Great. Councilmember Johnson, you want to start us off on this?
Sure. Great. I already mentioned looking forward to six B, and I look forward to the action on it, but I appreciate you having that perspective on the plan that's coming for strategic, economic development, strategic planning. You know, I look at D and G, and I think, wonder if there's some combining that can do there, refining those two together. That's just what I see, is some similarities, and maybe even specifically talking about, are there partnerships like SCORE? Would SCORE, could we get back, you know, find out who's coming into the chamber now, and sort of solidify those if we need to create those partnerships? And if we don't, and if the chamber's doing them, then we just are aware. So, I would look for D and G, some kind of... Maybe a little more specific, and then maybe one goal instead of, or one objective instead of two. Long overdue, business information on the website, but we've known that, so that's not a surprise, but it's good to see it back on, so that it does get accomplished. You know, I'm always a little curious and a little bit on the fence about incentives, so I would be curious to hear what kinds of incentives you're talking about. I mean, it's like, you know, a lot of people in the community will be like, "What, are they going to give away the farm?" So, you know, I think we want to be cautious about our infrastructure needs and what we would be able to offer. I think we do have things to offer. I just would be cautious about, you know, giving away things. I think you know what I'm saying? Okay? Then, for H, it was good to see that come back from LEAP, because, yeah, I think that was something that people really wanted during the LEAP process, but didn't get a real owner. And then, for J, I think we have heard in the... Certainly, we've had success with our Tourism Business Improvement District, but, you know, BIDs do tend to help the group that organizes them, so it would be good to have a conversation about that. I know it's come up once or twice. Is there a champion out there, or are there a group of champions in the business community that want to bring that forward? I would encourage city to look for that, and then, you know, have that discussion as you find the champions in the community. And then, the rest of the items, you know, obviously, we'll want to see what kind of economic development things are out there. I mean, we did our business license update, which, you know, really, we straightened out a lot of things there recently. And then, looking forward to, you know, talking a bit more about tourism later on this evening, to sort of figure out, maybe some other goals coming back. Thank you.
Great. Matt?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, especially on K, the economic development code scrub. Scott, does this go along with the general plan and LCP, and doing that separate, or that'll just happen in conjunction?
It could be both, is the answer to that. I mean, we do have policies that inhibit economic development in the city, or at least arguably do. Some of our parking policies are maybe not the most friendly, as an example, and these are things that we've talked about in the past. So, out of that effort will come changes to our zoning code, obviously, and there are other areas in the municipal code where there are issues, so it's not just zoning and land use-related. So, there are a number of those things that we're looking at. I think the Economic Strategic Plan is looking at some of those things. I see Mr. Taylor nodding his head, yes. So, we should get some information out of that process as well, and things to target to go fix, and for the council to review. So, I mean, that's, I think, you're going to get kind of a broad look at it over the coming months.
So, okay, to say the least, and then it'll probably be acting simultaneously.
Yeah, so if I could add to that, just to... I wanted to confirm that, that as part of the RFP process and the agreement we now have with Chamber and Concepts, we specifically require that they are going to go into our code and take a holistic view of it, and see what are some of their expert recommendations that could assist us. They might decide that our code's fantastic for business, but they're also going to come and listen to the community, and listen to our business community, and see what we can do.
And I guess, maybe, Dave, this is, I don't know if this is yours necessarily, but talking about the Maritime Museum, in terms of that coming up to speed and getting a contract and developing, will that be working simultaneously with the Triangle Lot development, the boat haul-out structure? Or they're both going to be... They're all going to be happening, but it just at different speeds, maybe?
So, the Maritime Museum is really a two-phased project. They vision a near-term phase, which is to move the boats, and then do a temporary building, and then the longer-term building, which would be a permanent... The near-term would be off-the-grid, not connected to electric. The longer-term project would... Is the longer... Is the bigger one. Certainly, the longer-term one absolutely would need to be synchronized with Triangle Lot, possible boatyard, power plant, all of those things, to make sure that area is right. The... In the near term, they're... The deciding for the temporary building is already part of the work that's been done. Really, this focuses on get the license agreement done. What we're trying to do in many areas is ensure that we're not, you know, a back-room, handshake-deal sort of place, but have appropriate license agreements that are publicly vetted for all the different uses of public property.
Okay, I can see that. And then, when we talk about, like, the Embarcadero Plan, those are the bigger pictures. So, okay, I understand. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And just wanted to... So, I'm in support of the Morro Bay Power Plant placeholder. I know there's some more details to come back in there, but I'm glad to see that as a placeholder as things emerge. I think we need to be on that, so I appreciate having that. The Economic Development Strategic Plan, obviously, an ongoing, but still committed to that. Under business information on website, this is a great one. I have seen some quote-unquote "business toolbox" components from different cities, and basically, it's just a click-and-touch, and it has a fast track on how you get through businesses. So, I'm assuming that's kind of similar, so glad to see that. Commercial real estate inventory, would like to ensure that staff is included on that. I think we've all been aware of some of the commercial properties, the challenge of those. So, we might have a good inventory of them, but staff being linked to understand the appropriate use, or at least the allowable use, so you don't get people so far down the road, and then they don't quite understand what they're getting themselves into. So, you know, I'm in support of that. Also, want to make, I think we did have an inventory list from the Chamber a couple years ago, so I just want to mention that. The Business Improvement District, I guess I'd throw out, as an option, would just maybe do a workshop on bids, invite the business community. That's not necessarily saying we're, you know, we want to champion that, but educate the businesses and let them know what a BID might evolve. And then, you know, if there's a champion from restaurant, or businesses, or properties, or something, maybe something can evolve from that, might be a better approach. And those are my only comments. Noah?
Yes, thank you. I just want to follow up on J as well, because I do observe that the Tourism Business Improvement District was originated from within the industry, and I think that's why it succeeded. I don't think it would have been implemented if the city had come forward saying, "We have this idea, and we think you should consider it." And I would expect the same for any other sector and improvement district. So, I'd like to make sure that we change, if we continue to keep this in there, that it's shifted so that it's very clear the city is not the driver. I think your idea is a good one, you know, maybe some information. And I think if a community group, or business district, or sector came forward with an idea, we would certainly want to engage, just as we did with the Tourism Business Improvement District. The other thing that I think would be interesting is to go beyond marketing, to talk about what benefits an improvement district could provide for an area, including infrastructure and other things that that neighborhood has identified as being key to economic activity, and making it a nicer place for people to be.
It seems like it might be an appropriate time to pause, and maybe we can come back and pick up these at that time? Were there any other questions from, or comments from council? Anything to my left? Sorry, Noah.
Just briefly, I think in November, we saw the update as to where we are in our goals for this fiscal year, 15-16. So, without redoing everything, it might... By the time this comes back, if there are things we will not have accomplished from 15-16, and we want to continue forward, it might be nice to see them somewhere. I feel like a lot of things are, but if we've dropped things off, or if things are in process, you know, between two years, that might be good to just remind us of how far we've come and that... So, we don't lose track of things we wanted to do. Okay? Yeah.
That's great. I guess my sort of wrap-up comments were, I completely agree, so staff, we need to do a assessment on what we might... What we don't think we're going to get accomplished this year, that we think needs the emphasis to keep it on here. Some things we'll just finish, you know, in July or August, because they're on the track to finish. But if there's things that are of high import, then I concur, we at least need to highlight those for you. The other thing I'd say is that many of you have commented, the communities commented on, are we biting off the right amount? Are we biting off more than we can chew enough? I didn't add them up, but I'll bet you there are 73 or more objectives on this list here, and we heard another good 20 or 25 during public comment. So, we may well be... We are likely be in the position of, that hard position of prioritizing. And the first step of that will be during this process, and then the second step of that will be during the budget process. But I do need... We'll need to give you a feeling during this process on staff time resources. There's a lot of things that Jamie was sort of highlighting them with regard to some of the plans. We can think up a million plans for Scott to do that don't cost anything, except can Scott do them in the 365 days that he should be working every year?
Okay. Anybody else? Noah?
Yeah, I do. I have a couple of items that I was planning on discussing as we got to, the ones that we didn't quite get to tonight. I was wondering if it'd be helpful if I sent those to maybe you, Mr. Buckingham, so you could actually look at them beforehand, and it could maybe help expedite our next meeting. If we all did that, I don't know if you'd prefer us to do that, or just wait to... We did talk earlier, but do you want to see those in an email form, too, or something?
I would love that. So, if the council communicated, not with each other, but with me, on some of your thoughts, questions, and comments on the items seven, eight, nine, and 10, then that will certainly help facilitate our discussion next year. What I'll make sure that we do is we present those things as added, but perhaps not by whom, but that just... And same with the community. We're going to add in the things that we heard during public comment, so that would be really helpful.
Okay. I'll plan on doing that.
Okay. Thank you for all the...
Thank you for all the presentation and public comment on this. We are going to adjourn this meeting. We'll take a short recess and we'll be back for our regular city council meeting at 6:00. Thanks very much.